Call me to order. We have a shared vision in the furniture school district provide excellence for every student so each will reach their greatest potential. We are always happy to have parents and other community members at our meetings. Thank you to the members of the public who have joined us. As a reminder, school board meetings are work session. And work sessions are meetings of the board held in public. Providing an opportunity to observe the board's discussion and actions. In effort to conduct official board business, we ask that the audience be respectful. Refrain from questions, comments, and unnecessary noise while the board conducts meeting. Also, please note that all board meetings are live streamed and posted on the school board area. All right, well, first off, start with our citizenship boards.
Okay, well, unfortunately, our citizen isn't here. But Elmyra Elementary has chosen Elena Sutter as a great member of our school community. I'm going to read what her teacher, Miss Kenzie Rowe. We're excited to recognize Elena as a great member of our classroom and school community for being an enthusiastic learner with a positive attitude. She has grown so much in reading and math. In part because she perseveres when new skills are challenging. She helps others when they need it. And she asks great questions to always have a full understanding of what to do. And as her principal, I know that she always has a positive attitude, walks in with a smile, leaves with a smile, works hard, and follows all of our school rules. Stay responsible, respectful, and kind. And we will make sure to get a picture of her with her award. She will be thrilled.
Thank you. So next up is the approval of minutes. Have a motion to second to approve the minutes from the last board meeting, any discussion? Right now, I would say hi, hi.
Hi.
Great, any opposed? Question carries five to zero. That is one.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, this is our March first enrollment report. Our in district enrollment was twelve ninety-five, which is five fewer than last month. According to our budgeted numbers, we are down fifty-one for in district enrollment. At the elementary level, we are down forty-two. At the middle school, down six, and at the high school level, we are down by three. We also have eight more out of district placements than we had in the budget. And that is all I have on the enrollment report.
Any questions?
Can you hear me? Because you're cutting in and out.
Okay.
Okay, now I can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, this is our financial report as of February twenty-ninth. We have received eighty-seven percent of our budgeted revenue, which is slightly higher than this time last year. We have spent fifty-three percent of our operating expenditures, which is comparable to the fifty-one percent spent at this same time last year. I think I said in the last meeting that this is our triple pay month for payroll. So our expenses will jump up quite a bit next month as far as the salaries and benefit lines go. Also, I have figured out a way to do the supplemental budget without having our final audit. So I will be presenting that at the April eighth board meeting. And it's basically just to recognize the actual allocations of a few grants versus what was budgeted. Sometimes we don't know exactly what the grant amount is going to be when we build the budget. And if it ends up being more, we have to re-adopt a supplemental. So we have the spending rights to spend the whole entire amount. So that's pretty much what it's all about. And I will have that next month. Does the board have any questions on the financial report?
I have one question, please.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so this might have been said before, but I asked you to refresh my memory. With the capital outlay, there was zero dollars budgeted. But in October, the expenditure was over eight thousand, in February, over twenty-one thousand. That total was twenty-nine thousand. So is this, was it a one time for this year or is this going to be reoccurring?
Um, you know, it's hard to say. Sometimes it occurs and sometimes it doesn't. It's, it's hard to know when we're going to have those expenses. Some years we don't have any capital outlay expenses and then other years we do. It could be something like we had to replace carpet in a room, something along those lines. Or, you know, a repair needed done that we couldn't hold off on. Typically, I just don't budget anything in that line, but I could look at doing that. Yeah, it's, it's really hard to know when we're going to need it and when we won't need it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there's no other questions, if you need a motion to approve the general fund revenue and expenditure report. Have a motion in the second to approve the general fund revenue and expenditure report as of February twenty-ninth, for any discussion. You're not, favor say hi, hi.
Hi.
Opposed, carries five to two. First report tonight is from Elmyra Elementary.
Not that, it's not. Good evening, board members and superintendent carpenter. As most of you know, my name is Billy Perrier. I have the privilege of being the principal here at Elmyra Elementary School. I'm really excited to share some of the great stuff that's happening here at Elmyra. The picture up there is actually just a week ago when it was snowing. And that was the beginning of the snow. And I made a deal with the kiddos that if they stayed safe and somewhat dry, they could go out on their first recess. And they kept their promise and they had a lot of fun out at that first recess. So that was pretty thrilling. Okay, a little bit about our school. We currently have two hundred and seventy-seven students. We're expecting three new students after spring break, which will put us at two hundred and eighty. So that's exciting. The average class size is twenty-two kids per class. We have twenty certified employees and twenty-two classified employees. Some programs we have are general education classrooms. We have two bridges classrooms, special education classroom title program, PE every day, which is really thrilling. Full-time counselor, behavior support, and speech services. The two photos up there are staff. We have the first photo is our tie-dye party we had as a wellness project here at Elmyra. And then, of course, the other one is Halloween. One thing about elementary teachers is we love to celebrate and have a good time and be super silly. This works well. Thanks, Michelle, failing me to go back. There we go. Okay, a little just baseline data, as you all know, we use EZCBM to monitor academics here. We benchmark our students three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. We also progress monitor them in between that. The first graph is our fall and winter reading data. It just goes through kindergarten through fifth. Of course, we always want a hundred percent. We have work to do, but we're doing the work. One thing I really like to see is our second grade that started at thirty-eight percent meeting and they're at fifty-seven percent meeting, which is really awesome considering that's our largest group. The next graph is our EZCBM data. And again, our second grade really made some nice leaps along with our fifth grade, which is now at eighty-nine percent. I expect all of those scores to continue growing as we continue learning. A lot of times we see some really big growth in the spring. And I know that as a teacher as well. The last one is our regular attenders. Twenty-year, twenty-two, twenty-three, our ODE report card reflected sixty percent regular attenders. We are currently at seventy percent regular attenders. That number fluctuates. We've gone as high as seventy-eight percent. It dipped down a little bit recently, I think, because there's been illness going around. But attendance has been a personal goal of mine. Specifically, I want to make sure that kids want to come to school. And our average daily attendance is ninety-one point eight. So that is the data that drives our work. That's what we, why we do everything we do to make sure that our kiddos are learning and they're here. And of course, they're happy. I broke the PowerPoint down into the three parts of the furnish school district mission statement. So relationships, rigor, and relevance. Number one thing is relationships, and I would give us a gold star in terms of relationships. We have strong relationships with our, our students. We have a strong relationship as a staff and of course, with our families and the community members. We focus on social emotional learning. We have a full-time counselor that's teaching whole group and small group lessons. And also problem solving throughout the day, helping children problem solve. We use our positive behavioral support systems to make sure that we're increasing positive behavior and decreasing negative behavior. We have school-wide buddy reading programs. So our kindergartners meet with our fifth graders or our second graders, meet with our fourth graders. We do this either monthly or weekly. They focus on reading, math, art, anything really. But it really makes it a family here. We have a lot of family nights. We've had our title reading night already. Our math night is next month, and we just had an art night where over thirty-two families joined us. We had yogurt parfaits and did a bunch of art projects. It was really successful and really fun. Our staff make sure to have fun together and celebrate together. This can be a really hard job, and it's really important for us to take a deep breath together and have some fun every here and there. And we love our students. At the beginning of the year, we, we made a decision that we were going to call these our students. So regardless of what role you have here, these are all our kids. So we think, you know, if you're, you're a bad kid teacher and you don't ever see our little kinders, you still think of them as your students. And we call them that here. We call them our students. So pictures that you're going to see, the one on the playground is a surprise attendance day. We have a monthly surprise attendance day. All you have to do is be here to get the surprise. And, and this time we were serving popcorn, which was really fun. It was actually a very, very cold day, but they loved their popcorn. The corner picture is of Mr. Franklin's class. He's our second grade teacher and he was having his morning meeting. What's really cool about Mr. Franklin's class is he also does a closing meeting where they get to talk about their day, celebrate their day, and celebrate each other. And then the bottom picture is our staff doing the tie-dye, which was a blast and actually not very messy. So that worked out really well. I was a little bit nervous, but we did a great job keeping it all. Okay, rigor. So this is what we do, right? This is the heart of school. We want to make sure that kids are learning. Professional learning communities have been a part of burn rich school district for about eight years. What's really cool about professional learning communities is the two elementary schools work together to make decisions about student learning. So our, how do we know that they're learning? If they're not learning, what do we do next? If they are learning and they're exceeding, what do we do next? And the two elementary schools meet two or three times a month, and they have conversations around learning. Something that I'm really proud of and that we've accomplished over the last couple of years is a scope and sequence provoke math and ELA. And that's what I handed out to you. The first page is, this is like a zoomed in to, right? Because this gets, this is really long documents. I just picked some stuff. But the first one is the Kinder ELA scope and sequence. And then the second page is a fourth grade math scope and sequence. This is a great document because teachers are always on the same page between the two schools. The document states what standards we're working on, how long the units are, when we're teaching the units. And it's just a really great way to make sure everybody is using the curriculum with fidelity. Currently, teams are working on creating unit plans and common assessments. As you know, math, the math curriculum is new for us this year. So we are recreating a lot of documents as well as finishing up documents for English or from our reading curriculum that we got last year. So it's a lot of new stuff, but there's a lot of hard work going on. Literacy improvement through core instruction as an elementary school. Teaching reading is, it's the heart of what we do. I think I said that twice now, that's okay. But as we know through a ton of research, if we can get kids reading by fifth grade, that just puts them in a better position to graduate from high school, have higher paying jobs, and do what they love. So we really focus heavily on literacy here. And as a team, we focus on the big five, so phonics, phonemic awareness, fluency, comprehension, and vocabulary. And I actually am going to show you a little bit of phonemic awareness here. Once I get done with this slide, that's why these great students are here. They're going to model for you some phonemic awareness that we do in our classrooms. We're also part of the Oregon RTI. So we have district level teams participating in professional learning and meeting monthly. Through that, we've created common expectations for our ninety minutes of core and a walkthrough tool. That's the second part of the packet that I gave you. And those are really exciting documents that we're going to use to increase fidelity of our curriculum in the classrooms. The picture of the computer lab down there is what we're calling Camp SPAC. So SPAC is our state testing. And we're trying to make it fun for the kids. We're trying to make it uplifting, so we're calling it Camp SPAC. And that photo was actually the teacher modeling how to use an interim assessment. This week, the students are going through that process with the teacher. And then from here on out, they will start doing that process themselves to give them exposure to the test and also to just being on computers. Most of our teachers do use the computer lab often, but it's really good just to get those kiddos in there and used to it. We also have a lot of continued professional development happening. I'm really proud of the fact that a hundred percent of our K through two staff is participating in letters training, letters training. It's not a curriculum, but it's a way to teach reading, using the science of reading. And there's a ton of professional development happening outside of that as well. Equity, science, all of that, lots of learning happening. So I'm going to pause right now. I know that a lot of you can't come into the classroom, so I decided to bring a little bit of the classroom to you. You are going to see a snippet of Hagerty. Hagerty is really awesome. It teaches phonemic awareness, which is being able to rhyme words, hear parts of words, take words apart, put it back together. What we noticed after the pandemic is that we had a great need for this. And so the district really stepped in and got us Hagerty. And we actually use this K through five, either whole group or small group. So they're very excited to show you. So I'm going to have them come up. And then I did tell them that they could leave afterwards. So this Kenzie, you can come right here. And these students are actually part of our one-two blend. Miss Kenzie gives their teacher. Most of the time, this is done with kiddos on the carpet or in a small group basket. What I love about this is it's very engaging. So most of the time when I walk into a classroom, a hundred percent of kids are engaged in this. So I'm going to underdo our time.
Okay, guys, here we go. We are going to blend sounds together to make a word, and we're going to hear words that have consonant digraphs, which are two letters. And so we're just going to choose.
Pitch. Pitch. Pot. Pot. Hey, Charles. Um, where's the beach?
Each.
Each. Teeth.
Teeth.
Yeah, um, tell me the word for the first name, rash. Yes, search. Yeah. Fourth.
Fourth. Fourth. Fourth.
Worst.
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, nice job. Look at that, right on the beach. Okay. So, um, we're gonna add a sound at the beginning of the words, make a new word, and we're gonna use words and have digraphs. So, sort of, and. At.
Sh.
Mm-hmm, at.
At. At.
Art.
Art.
Uh, oh, sorry, ort. Port, at. Sh.
Sure.
Yeah. Air.
In.
Add.
Chain.
Got it, arc.
On.
Add. Sh.
Shark.
Mm-hmm. I. And. Stop, should get out. Um, okay, now we're gonna take away. And so, um, say, chase.
Ch.
Without the ch.
A.
Yes, shade.
Ch.
Without the sh.
A.
Cheat.
Cheat.
The ch.
Cheat.
Shin.
Shin.
Not the sh.
In.
Got it, champ.
Champ.
Without the ch.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna change the sound, we're gonna change the first sound to. And west.
West.
Ch.
Chat.
Got it, bird.
Bird.
Yeah, is that not kinda weird, you guys? Um, pen.
Pen.
Change the p. To w.
Right.
Yeah, good. Um, maid. Change the m to sh. Quack. Change the t.
Thank you kiddos and thank you Ms. Kenzie. Um, so again, just super engaging and, um, I think the best way to teach kids is to engage them, so that's just a great example of that happening in our schools. Okay, the last, um, part of that mission statement is relevant, um, so we know that student learning has to be relevant to them and we do that in a variety of ways. Um, field trips are huge, we're really getting back to the swing thing, the swing of things after the pandemic, we've had kids go to the University of Oregon, to the Omsi, to Grocery Outlet and tour that, um, and we also have field trips planned, going to the mill, um, and going to Mount Pisgah, so lots of exciting things happening there. We've had a handful of really fun assemblies, the Omsi has, um, come on in, Sluggo has come in, and we have African dancing in April. We've had two different music series, John's The Great Miss Jen, one was general music, and then we just finished ukulele. Dance starts in April as well, so we just received a notice that we did get the Oregon Country Fair grant and we will have dance started. We have smart reading and OBob back in action, which is really exciting, our OBob team just went to regionals, the Taco Cats, um, they had an absolute blast. And we have smart reading happening in kindergarten, so we have volunteers once a week, reading with kids, lots of guest speakers, we have 4H coming into third grade, the city administrator, local law enforcement, um, and local firefighters. The Walama Restoration Project is happening in fourth grade, where they're learning about native plant life and planting plants, and we're planning for outdoor school. I Did a Read is currently happening, tomorrow's the last day to turn in minutes, we have a picture of, uh, Mr. Dawn reading with some of our students down there. I Did a Read is just a long-held tradition here at Elmira, gets kids motivated to read and it's just super fun. So, um, that has been a pleasure as well. Okay, so I just asked the staff what they would want, um, all of you to know about our school, so these are just some fun facts, so, uh, Elmira spends thirty minutes every day focused on morning meeting and social emotional learning, this is built into our schedule. Elmira has an amazing PTA that supports kids and staff. Um, our PTA purchases snacks for our kiddos, which for some of them, that's critical to their learning. Third grade is hatching chicks right now, there's a picture, um, and they're getting close, I think, and if you need a chicken, you should ask that their grade teachers, cause.
Can we get on the list?
Yeah.
No.
That's a real thing, I don't know what's gonna happen once all the chickens hatch, but I'm just going with it. Um, kindergarten has caterpillars, which is a little bit easier when it comes to managing them, um, they are hoping they will turn into beautiful butterflies by spring break. They're actually large, and my experience as a classroom teacher with caterpillars is they don't usually look that good, so I must have been doing something real wrong for a lot of years. Um, the talent show is happening this April, uh, which is another thing that is now coming back after the pandemic, so I'm really excited. And Ms. Herbert wrote this one, I love it, students have completed five thousand and eighty-one miles so far this year, we've made it across the United States and almost all the way back, so that is awesome. Uh, this is a jam board that the staff wrote, so just some things they love about Elmira. Staff deeply cares about both students and each other, focus on equitable practices, the school atmosphere is warm and fun. Our PTA, um, is, and our wonderful volunteers, we have a lot of volunteers this year who come and serve our students and our school, um, and that's been really amazing. The culture of support, caring, growth, and fun, grownups who truly care about the well-being and education of students and not just test results make a huge difference. The feeling I get each morning when walking into our building and seeing our caring staff and sweet students, that one really hit home when I read it, because that's my favorite part of the day in the morning and seeing all those kids so excited to learn. What I love about EES is all of our students and staff, tag games, uh, we have monthly tag games, also, um, an idea of Ms. Herbert, but basically the staff plays tag throughout the day, it can get real wild. Um, I love the positive school culture we have and how much we care about kids, staff, families, and kids have a lot to smile about, teamwork, our ability to problem solve and work together to do what's best for our kids, and the care and support we have for each other, that was some words from the staff. Um, and the final slide is just a big thank you for supporting our kids, um, thank you school board members, community members, staff, parents, PTA, and volunteers, I know it takes a village, and, um, this is an awful good village to be a part of, and I deeply appreciate all the work that goes into making sure that our students get what they need to be happy in life. Uh, any questions?
Can you hear me?
I can hear ya.
So I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say thank you so much.
You are very welcome, it's in the least talk about.
I agree.
I love what I do. Thanks.
All right, next up is Gavin.
Yeah. Um, so tomorrow softball and baseball will start, um, softball play, home game, pending the weather at the moment. Um, they'll start their game against Dayton at four-thirty, uh, baseball, we travel into Dayton tomorrow, pending weather, of course. This Saturday, we have the Elmira Relays, starting at eleven at the high school, back at Field. So, um, we finally had the dance, after a lot of weather delays, anything else, um, it happened, um, last Saturday. Big thank you to, uh, Ms. Wartham, the, um, Ms. Latham over there, um, Dan and Ms. Snyder for showing up to volunteer, I know, um, Sue wasn't able to make it, it's a family thing, but they all thought they were doing that evening to come, uh, hang out with everyone and check for the dance. Hope it wasn't, hope it wasn't too boring for y'all. Dan made sure I said that. You wanted to give my shout out. We have our career fair, uh, the twentieth, um, that's from nine to eleven-thirty, that's for juniors and seniors. So our seniors would do their, uh, prior interviews that to graduate, the first half of it, why the juniors, uh, go to the main gym and they would, uh, speak of all the, uh, people who careers there, there's a bunch of people there, and then the seniors wanna switch and then we'll go do that with the juniors back in class. We have parent teacher conferences coming up, uh, the twenty-first and twenty-second, um, no school that Friday. Spring breaks, the twenty-fifth to the twenty-ninth, um, our end of the quarter will be the fourth of April. Um, there's no school that Friday, and then we'll be three fourths through the year, because it's almost over, my senior is almost over. And then, uh, cross May fourth, and that will be at the Ford Elementary Center, um, at, uh, at the St. Mary's. So I got, like, if you have any questions.
All right, next up is Fern Ridge Education Association.
What is a strong effective leader? An effective leader is someone who has the ability to successfully influence and support a team or group of people. Strong leadership is when you encourage, motivate, inspire, and challenge your team to produce their best work. Strong leadership connects a team together through a common purpose and builds relationships in the workplace that allow for effective communication, more creativity, and better problem-solving skills. It's about loyalty and commitment. Superintendent Carpenter has worked in this district for over twenty-five years, where he began as a teacher, then a principal, and now a superintendent. On behalf of Korea, he has never once told us that he wouldn't meet with us to discuss something. Whether it's big or small, he is always there to listen, discuss items, and challenge us. Yes, we don't always see eye to eye on every topic and issue, but it shouldn't always be that way, it's healthy. That would also make things too easy, right? And boring, no? When I attend meetings with leaders in other local districts, they sometimes say that their superintendents won't even meet with them, I'm always horrified. During the course of this year, there have been at least six MOUs or MOAs that we have come to an agreement on. Whether it's a clarification on something in our contract, or some new agreement that is helping us support teachers even more, it's been impressive. Also, a grievance has never been filed under Superintendent Carpenter, according to Forrest, who just had a leave for another meeting, but he's the guru in charge of this area on our executive team. Any items that came up or were in the start of the grievance process were worked out ahead of time, so they didn't have to reach that stage. He listens and he cares, he is active, engages in, and helps out at various events. The shot clock at this year's basketball games and track meets, to name a few. I honestly don't know how he has time for it all, thank you for all that you do, Gary, and the support that you show in collaborating with Korea. Lastly, as I talked about at the last board meeting, the school bond is on the May twenty-first ballot. If we truly want what is best for our students, it is imperative that Korea and the community come together to advocate and vote to support the bond. See me after the meeting, if you're interested in helping in some capacity, so I can get your contact info. And I think there are enough items through Gavin and the board agenda that I don't need to talk about the upcoming events, so, thank you.
All right.
Thank you to Ms. Snyder. The only real topic is follow-up on the bond, um, so last board meeting, two weeks ago, that next day, I went to elections office, done our initial paperwork, which was the SCL eight oh five, which had our bond title language and a description, uh, we had a seven-day waiting period, in case there was any challenges, what we submitted, um, on Friday of last week, I submitted our SCL eight oh three, which finalized everything, they gave us a major number. Uh, major number will be twenty-dash-three-five-four, uh, we will be on the ballot. Um, as far as the elections office goes, now we are good to go, filed ready to go for election day, May twenty-first. Two different kind of tracks going on to get out information relates, as it relates to the bond, one, Ms. Snyder mentioned, a community pack, um, that's something that I won't be involved in at all, but it'll be led by parents in our community, staff in our community, um, to get out information, which we put the vote on the bond from the district side, uh, and what I put out will really just be informational only. Um, we are almost done with an FAQ, uh, we'll have a social media page up, uh, maybe at now, it's just not live and I haven't shared it. A lot of information will be, uh, pushed out, um, so I imagine by the end of the week, um, you'll start to, to see a lot of that, and I'll direct people to, um, where these documents are located. I'll be visiting some local groups in the community, um, our next board meeting is the eighth, but the city, the Nida City Council meeting is that night. Um, and so, since I don't think I can go, I'll be here, Ms. Marshall will be going, we have a resolution for the city manager, Matt Michelle, I'll be discussing it there, and the city council will be, uh, voting to endorse or support the bond, they're not. So those are just some of the things, uh, in the works, I feel like we're on track, uh, and again, probably more information will be out by the end of the week regarding all that we have done. I feel like we're on track there again, bond major number twenty-dash-three-five-four, that's us. Thank you.
Uh, next discussion is, we have a second reading of the proposed twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five calendar, that is prepared for.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion?
Right.
Okay, so can I please make a motion to, um, adapt the Fern Ridge School District, um, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five public calendar?
There's a motion, a second, to adopt the twenty, uh, twenty-four, twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five, uh, school, both school calendars, any other discussion? If none, I would favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, five to zero. All right, next is, uh, second update on the longitudinal performance growth targets and school board goal.
Yes.
All right.
That is it. Oh, sure. Um, I am at a different angle. Bam. Do you wanna kick us off, Mr. Carpenter?
Sure, I'll take this up. This is ninety percent Ms. Marshall's work here, ten percent my input, she gathers all the information, a lot of support from Becky Duvey, uh, building principals to gather this data, remember one of our goals, uh, in August that we set, um, was around keeping the board informed periodically throughout the year, so we did that in December, this is now March, while our third and final one of these is in June. Um, so, listen to it all, if you have questions along the way, feel free to jump in. Ms. Marshall.
Thank you. Um, I would have, we kept the slide deck exactly the same, so if it looks familiar, that's great. Uh, it is, the integrated plan for ODE is a lot of information, it's hundreds and hundreds of pages, and so I'm trying really, really hard to keep it as transparent and like readable as possible. So essentially, it combines multiple different funding sources all onto one spreadsheet with overarching district goals, and all of the things that we have to do, so, and like Mr. Carpenter said, one of the goals of, for the board was to make sure that you guys get updated and feel a part of the team. So, here we go, the focus goal for, that's number two for you guys, is just hearing more about the longitudinal performance growth targets and how we're making progress. It's tricky because a lot of them are, um, they're like year-end goals, right, we're looking at five-year trends, we're looking at annual data, and so we have a couple of things in place and hopefully we just kinda continue to build on that, so that we have better progress checks along the way. Let's see here, so remember, it's growth over time and that metrics move differently, so we did a lot of work, hopefully some of this feels familiar, uh, this is all the same stuff. Um, we did a lot of work with the district level team, a lane educational service district team and an ODE team, that, uh, you have to come together and propose different rates, because they look at your growth over time, they look at the top ten percent of districts in the state, they look at how much time you're spending and how much funding you're giving to each different area, and then you kind of work together to make an appropriate goal. Um, so this is kind of, this is updated as of three-dash-seven, that we were at twelve ninety-four, I think, wanna mention twelve ninety-five today, so already off by one kid. And the big thing I, I want folks to recognize is that we really do have a large vocal group population, we have two hundred and forty-one students of color and tribal indigenous students that, um, are there, we have two hundred and sixty-one students that experience some form of disability or have a disability, whether it's reading, writing, math, behavioral speech. Um, we have thirteen bilingual students, emerging bilingual, so they are getting ELD support. We have six hundred and forty-four students, so that's just about fifty percent of our student population navigating poverty, homelessness, or cost of care. So, the bulk of those kids are low SES, which means that they qualify for state, um, reduced lunch prices, and that's where we get that number. So, in total, eight hundred and eight of our students fall into one of those groups. This is our district equity lens, and part of the work that's happened around this is to really just kind of be mindful and thoughtful as we're making decisions. It's, it's no, there's no right answer necessarily, but how do we kind of think through funding sources and decision-making, and what we're, where we're allocating our dollars, so that it can be equitable and we're doing the best for all of our kids. Uh, remember that K-12 regular attenders is that your students who are in school ninety percent of the time on their days enrolled. So, if I'm at school for, enrolled for ten days, I need to be there at least nine of those days, if I'm only there for seven of those days, I am not a regular retender. And remember that this is important data, because the, the districts, uh, in ODE used to look a lot at average daily attendance, which is a great indicator, you know, Billy just shared that her school's about ninety-two percent, so ninety-two percent of the kids are there on a daily basis, but it's really looking at the kids that are there the bulk of the time, that ninety percent, which is hard, because kids go on vacation, they go hunting, they get sick, um, they have family issues, and so it's trying to find that balance of staying home when you need to and honoring that, but also really encouraging kids to be at school, because we know that the kids that are at school at least ninety percent of the time are more successful. So these were our percentages that helped us kind of with our target goals, um, it, we have our enrollment numbers here, this is for this year so far, um, and then we have our average daily attendance, which our, our in-person buildings are all above ninety percent, and that's pretty good. Um, our year-to-date is where we're, that's our goals, right, we're trying to get to, um, seventy-four percent, I think, this year, so that's still a stretch for some of us, but we're working on it, and then as a district, we're at about sixty-four point four-two percent, um, not, not to like blame options or anything, but it's hard with options, because those kids are online, and so they have a different type of attendance rule, so they have to be online for at least fifteen minutes of every class where they're absent. So you can see our, our ten kids in middle school options, we don't have one that's a regular retender, so. And, and that's, I mean, that's part of the reason that they're online, is because they have a hard time getting to school, or whatever their reasoning is, so, um, it doesn't, it's not a huge impact, but it, it does impact our overall. Some of the work that we're doing there is, uh, building administrators are, they report out at our leadership and admin teams, they're doing things like the surprise attendance, they're having assemblies, they have incentives, um, they're really just trying to build those relationships and encourage kids. So then, one of our other goals is around third grade English Language Arts and the OSAS, um, state assessments, so that's hard, because that's a summit to the set, assessment, it's at the very end of the year, so we won't know, but we use other indicators, our EZCBM, our grade level testing, um, we'll be able to look at some of our interim assessments and kind of get an idea. One thing that we're using as an indicator for just monitoring growth in third grade is our EZCBM, which is a curriculum-based measure, it's an assessment that you can give to everybody and it's normed, uh, nationally, so you can kind of get an idea of how your students are performing compared to other similar grade students across the nation. We want always to be a hundred percent, um, one level that a lot of reading specialists will say is eighty percent at least, right, that's, that's, if you can get to eighty percent in the lower risk category, you're doing really, really well. So for us, we are trucking along, we're, winter, it's that bottom category there, um, low risk, we're at sixty-two percent reading overall, and then they break it down by categories, passage reading, fluency, vocabulary, proficient reading, so you can kind of see the growth, or, or a little bit of a drop in some of those areas. And then, like, right now, aren't they doing progress monitoring in all the buildings right now? So we're just getting into, like, in between benchmark assessments, they do progress monitoring, so there's, it's ongoing.
So.
Yeah.
Isn't it? I've asked this question before, and, um, the, the timing of the, of the assessment.
EZCBM.
Sometimes, you're just in a really hard even.
Sure, well, and, and EZCBM is supposedly, it's, it's, um, let's say it's fall, right? The, the difficulty of the passage, for a one-page passage that you have to read, the difficulty doesn't change over time, right, so it's, it's this hard, this hard, this hard, this hard, but what changes is how many words per minute you're supposed to get, so the scale changes, and that's kind of, I think what happens, and what happens not necessarily as much in third grade, but like first grade, they have shifts in assessment. So they change, in the fall, they're doing one type of assessment, like the phonemic awareness, and then later in the year comes word reading, because the skills change for the kids. So.
Right.
Yes, it's, it's tricky, this isn't the best indicator, but it's kind of the only thing we have that leads us to how our kids will perform on that OSAS test. Thank you, and then they also have classroom data as well. Um, ninth grade on track is our another area that we're focusing on, and this is the whole state, we didn't choose our areas, I think I've explained that before as well. Um, every district in the state that has an integrated plan has these metrics. So ninth grade on track, this is kind of some of our historical data and our goals, our goal for the end of the year for all students is eighty-one percent. Our stretch goal, which means like, oh, we really wanna get there, we wanna push it even further, is eighty-three point seven, and for our vocal group students, we want at least seventy-six percent. And again, these, the growth goals weren't necessarily, I couldn't go and say, we're, we wanna be at a hundred percent, ODE would have pushed back on that. Uh, so this is where we're at as of January thirty-first, this is another one that's a little tricky to gauge at different points of time, so, uh, Mr. Golddigger at the high school who's in charge of this, I kind of sent him an email and I was like, get me as accurate and new information as you can, but for him, he has to look at the semester, so when progress reports come out, we can do some fiddling with that too and get some other ideas, but this is really, this is important, because it's actual grades transcripts, so we have sixteen of our hundred and four freshmen have two or more Fs, if they have two or more Fs, then it shows that they're not on track to get the credits something. However, that means we do have eighty-four point six, which is on track, so if we can stay there, we, we've met our goal and exceeded our stretch, which is fantastic. Um, the high school does a lot of wonderful work around meeting and talking about kids, being flexible, adjusting what they need to do, however they can support, and, um, I think that they're doing, it seems like we're on track there. And to be on track, six credits by the end of the year. Let's see. For your graduation, we can't really predict anything, um, right now, so we're aiming for eighty-five point five percent, our, we had eighty-four percent graduate last year, all students. And the state average, if you can kind of look at for your, um, graduation for our district is eighty point seven, the county is seventy-five point eight, I think. Um, and I don't know, I don't have the state average up there. Five-year completion is our students that have graduated and the students that graduate next fall here. And I think I shared this last time too, that we're in the top ten percent of the state in this category as well. Uh, same slide from before, just some of the things that people are working on, definitely an attendance focus in all of our buildings, our elementary is really doing a lot of work at the building level, my own organ, my TI, a two-day conference coming up in April, we have over seventeen. We have over seventeen staff members participating in that letters training, which is very intensive. Reading instruction, professional learning. We have the middle school that's working on their positive school culture and you know, how to engage students and build relationships. They also have a middle school math team that's working with Laney S D for state assessments. And then ninth grade uh, success meetings happening at the high school, counselor check ins and attendance activities there. I think that's it. Um, what does all of that mean? We're just continuing to collect the data. There's so many documents happening. We're actually, we'll be adding, I talked to you guys a little bit about the early literacy grant. And that was just approved for us. We just signed the grant agreement and sent it back, so that'll become a part of the integrated plan next year. So there will be another one for us to look at. That's it. Yeah.
Any questions? On the board? All right. Moving on to personnel, we've got three hirings and one resignation. And then we have also six resolutions for contract renewals and extensions. Which all require support action. I would say that you could include them all, the four either hiring or resignation. And then the six resolutions, twenty three dash twenty four, size zero, five through ten.
I moved that we first approved items under nine A one.
Have a motion in a second to approve the items under nine A one. Do we have any other discussion? None, all of the favorites say aye, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Those motion carries five to zero.
I would then move to accept resolutions twenty three dash twenty four slash oh five through ten.
A second.
Have a motion in a second to approve resolutions twenty three dash twenty four, size zero, five through ten. Any discussion on that? None, all of the favorites say aye, aye?
Aye.
Those motion carries five to zero. Under nine B, we do have just some, you know, a few non licensed personnel. Just so people can see it. Okay. Oh, okay, sorry. And then that's just for information. And then we also do have a resident, we have a renewal of that's information only, we don't have to have action on the no, it's under, it's actually under nine B one. That's just information only also. Okay, so we do need more action on the renewal of the district office group for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
I would like to approve the law for the district office group for twenty four to twenty five.
I'll second that.
The motion in in a second to renew the district office group for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, any further discussion? None, all of the favorites say aye.
Aye.
Me and those. Carries five to zero. Uh, I have one just late item. Michelle will send out the superintendent evaluations to the board this week sometime and they will need be returned by April second so she can pile, she can file all the information for her next meeting. Any other late items or closing comments?
So I I do want to ask a couple of things. Is, um, in regards to the science adoption? And they're putting together the two different choices. Will we be able to get that, say, the Thursday before the meeting in April?
Hey. It won't be on the agenda in April. I believe will be at least May, right?
Yeah, May first is when they have to get their two choices to me.
You'll definitely get it more timed than having four days. At a minimum, two to three weeks, I'll get the information to the board ahead of the board meeting.
Oh, perfect, thank you. And then with the survey tools, I've wanted to find out. Oh. Because I I do have a question, what is the evaluation cycle? What timeframe is that?
For the superintendent?
Yes.
So as far as the board filling it out, you'll get it this week and then you'll have until April second.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about this year's. I'm talking about for next year's.
It has to be completed by the meeting, I believe.
And that's the whole cycle, otherwise we have to have our tools and everything done. I'll tell you. Okay. There, there you go. So in talking about the evaluation process, they're saying that this is something that should be established prior to an evaluation cycle. And I was just wondering, what time is the evaluation cycle?
Go from April to April. So I think what we've talked about this year is our plan this spring is you'll decide what the board will decide what tool they want to use next year. You have this year, so May, June, July will decide the tool, board will decide. August, like we did this summer at the retreat, we'll set board goals and then it comes April.
So then, are you saying that this will be on the agenda in May? This May?
Cycle, it it could be in in May or June, we'll want to be talking about what it is you want to do for, what it is that the board wants to do for twenty four, twenty five.
Okay, so that'll be in May or June. Okay, and the other thing is, do we want to talk about about, you're asking for two dates for the staff exit surveys for the data from that? So is that something that the board needs to discuss?
Possibly, I mean, my, I think the most likely dates would be July and January, frankly, if you want, depends how many times you want it. If you want it once a year, I think July is a good time. If the board wants it twice a year, I would say we would share that information in July and January. It seemed logical to me, but.
Okay, um, okay, I've I've heard two different times, once a year and then twice a year. So I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe much difference between July and December, but there might be some, so it depends on what the board wants. If the board wants it once a year, my suggestion would be July.
Okay, and then if twice a year, so is that something that we could talk about or put it on the agenda in April?
Sure, we can add it to the agenda in April when you want those.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other late items or closing comments? All right, I think almost all of the upcoming events have been announced. I believe, Doncho and Benita on the twelfth and a community egg hunt. I think everything else, if I'm missing anything, it isn't on the agenda. There's no objection returned.